No, not today.
Oh, this big binder here?
Yeah.
It's actually the hot sheet, you know. Yeah.
Yeah. Get me a printer. I want it permanently because it never works. What printer do I use?
You know, some of the pictures, some parts of buildings.
Is it going to stay here?
Uh, yeah, I can't hear it.
I hereby call it over. The meeting on our school board. Senator, would you please call a roll?
Mrs. Coghill?
Here.
Mrs. Crabtree?
Here.
Mr. Gambiani?
Here.
Mrs. Etuhar?
Here.
Mr. Paulson?
Here.
Mr. Matheson is absent. Mr. Roman?
Here.
Mr. Mack, would you please release some questions?
Let's begin. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Mack. Does any board member have any modifications to the agenda for this evening?
Other than the short bit?
I'm afraid we can't do that.
I know.
Hearing none, we'll move on to public comments. Do we have any public comments? We have two individuals signed up for public comments. The opportunity to speak to the board is provided for members of the public who have questions or comments on an agenda item. The board appreciates hearing from stakeholders and values your thoughts and questions. The board strives to make the best decisions for the district. Public input in a variety of venues is very helpful. The board must protect its civility and decorum at this meeting. Please be respectful for the duties of the board, the democratic process, and your tolerance tonight. Please use the microphone, state your name, and whether you are a resident of the district, and address your comments to the board. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Please be factual and courteous, and do not include statements that are personally disrespectful or condescending to board members or staff. If you feel your matter needs to be discussed in more detail, please attend the board's chance to chat or present your comments to us in writing. Ms. Stephanie Fancro, before.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Fancro. I am the vice chair of the Citizens Advisory Committee. For the committee's first year, we had a great group of 31 community members. I enjoy being part of this committee and feel we are off to a great start. For your reference in your folder is a recap of the 2015-2016 meetings. There was a great range of topics addressed, which has created an excellent foundation of information for the 2016-2017 CAC meetings, topics such as master facility plan, future of instruction and technology, and District 200 five-year financial projections. Next is a recap of the CAC feedback and interest survey. Committee members completed a survey at the last meeting. The first section is learnings through CAC, with feedback as follows. District is committed to effective communication with the community. Diverse student population is celebrated by administrators and staff. Importance of Jefferson to the community and the school in general. Financial state of district and how well the district is managed. An in-depth look at all the facilities within the district. Next is how CAC members felt about the meetings. Meetings are well organized with clear agenda and timeframe. Ease of interaction with administration and committee members. Good schedule of topics. All opinions were welcomed and considered. Easy to understand presentations and materials. The last section is recommendations for future meetings. Continue to increase dialogue on topics during the meeting. Identify how members can continue CAC objectives between meetings. Send topic materials to committee members prior to meeting. Define specific areas within a topic where feedback is needed. And encourage Board of Education to identify any specific topics they would like CAC to review during the upcoming school year. Next steps: First, determine number of open slots available on CAC. We had an excellent high return rate of community members. All but three members have chosen to return next year. Second, advertise and solicit new members to the open spots with the desire to ensure broad representation to entire District 200 community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Fancro. I think each member of the board could have at least one CAC that is unanimous in our views on how well the readings went, the good feedback that we received, and how important we think this opportunity to come in is. So, thank you for all your efforts. The second speaker we have is Harold Watts. Harold?
How you doing? I didn't realize the CAC comments were on the agenda tonight. Good evening. I'd like to make a few comments and start with the VoIP contract. It's nice that the monies can be saved by switching vendors, but at the cost of $35,000 to terminate the contract, why did we sign a six-year contract that included a substantial termination fee? There's also no mention of actual cost of VoIP services to understand the magnitude of a future $40,000 savings starting next year. How much do we spend annually on VoIP? Let's be transparent on costs besides savings. Next, a few comments regarding the bus service. Three years ago, the headlines in suburban life stated, "CUSD-100 expects $300,000 in transportation savings." Here's the article. I wonder what the headlines will read tomorrow. Maybe transportation costs are increasing by $1.5 million next year, and where would the funds come from? Our current vendor won the bid three years ago for bus service because their bid was an all-or-nothing deal. The board approved the contract, and now we're paying the consequences. The new Illinois Central contract is a cool $1 million higher than the current cost, which is a 20% increase. The $900,000 in savings over the past three years just vaporized. Not written in the agenda summary is the increase in transportation costs of the out-of-district students. The increase is about a half a million dollars, which is almost a 100% increase. The person who ran the summary must be using common core math, because the total dollars spent, the amount of percentage increase does not matter because there's only one bid received. The contract shows a complete lack of transparency on the course of transportation. For the taxpayers out there, transportation costs are going up 30% or $1.5 million this coming school year. Too bad the board administration did not bank the $4 to $5 million in savings for the 60-plus teachers retiring last year. The savings were given back as additional compensation to certify staff for nothing in return. The administration and most of the board members keep spending beyond our means and then tax the taxpayers to the max. Now you can see why the public or taxpayers do not support the last bond referendum, and unlikely to support a future bond or tax rate referendum. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Watts. Now, we have the superintendent's report. Dr. Schuler?
Thank you, Mr. Roman. And just one quick point of clarification as I start the superintendent report. The community engagement report is on the agenda tonight, so I think the comments relative to CAC had to do with that agenda item that is actually on the agenda. Couple of things that I wanted to share with the board, though, kind of starting the meeting this evening. One is just an invitation. And before your June meeting at 6:45, so 45 minutes prior to that meeting, we are going to be hosting an open house to honor Mary Lou with members of the community. So, board members, I don't know if Mary Lou even knew that until just a few seconds ago. I can kind of feel these eyes. Glad.
She hasn't kicked you yet?
Not yet. Move over a little bit. But board members, please, if you'd like to come early and join us, we're going to take reception. We've got some folks that want to have an opportunity to come by and say thank you, so we're going to be doing that. Second thing I wanted to share with the board and community tonight, a couple different points in this year. I've shared an exciting process that Janine Pruga helped work with the high schools on this year to get proof our ability to put a seal of bilinguism on students' diplomas, so students could qualify for that seal of bilinguism accommodation through having completed an assessment that in fact determined that they were in fact bilingual. That process is open to students who are native speakers of a second language, or students that have completed a course of study in foreign language and thus qualify. And so, we had a number of students that signed up to go through that process this year, got the results back from the assessment, and there are 27 students that we ignored that have been granted either the seal or accommodation, and there are 60 students that we ignored those south that have qualified again with either the seal or the accommodation. So, again, I think really, really good news. I shared with the board a little bit earlier today, and continued to be some discussions today down in Springfield on school funding. So, it's Senate Bill 231, that's the new version of Senate Bill 16. Senate Bill 1 by Andy Menard did in fact pass out of the Senate. It has not been called in the House and doesn't appear as though it's real likely that that's going to get called in the House. But at the same time, today, there was a hearing in the House where they were entertaining a comment on the evidence-based model that is a model several organizations that District 200 is a part of have really advocated moving this evidence-based model, and it does appear to be getting potentially some good traction. So, it's not officially been introduced in legislation, but it was introduced in a committee hearing today, and I guess the good news in terms of kind of understanding legislative process, Speaker Madigan, I understand, attended that committee hearing today specifically to learn about that evidence-based model. So, again, I think there's potentially some good traction around that, but I think next couple of weeks and probably into the fall, there's going to be quite a bit of discussion and jostling between those potential two school funding bills that we'll stay on top of. And then finally, I just wanted to mention, as we approach the end of the year, and no board is set as well, where there's lots of exciting activities going on in schools between Explore More Days and Student Honors Assemblies and Multicultural Days and lots of really, really neat stuff that's going on. So, I would encourage you perhaps to maybe check in with your adopted schools and see what they have going on. There's great opportunities at the end of the year to take part in one of the celebratory activities. I think it's, sorry, Chris, coming in hard to believe we're at that point in the year that appeared to come up really, really quickly, but we are in that home stretch, and I'd invite you, encourage you to join us for one of those activities. That's it.
Thank you, Dr. Schuler. We now move to the consent agenda. For those who have not attended board meetings before, I'm required to read each title to the consent agenda. And tonight, Dr. Schuler has challenged me with 28 items on the consent agenda, plus the 29th on the consent agenda item two. So, bear with me. One, acceptance of gift at Edison Middle School. Two, acceptance of gift at Wheaton Warrenville South High School. Three, approval to post board policy 7.190 student discipline, 7.20 suspension, 7.210 expulsion for public review and comment. Four, approval to post middle school math eight textbook for public review and comment. Five, approval to post high school information technology two textbook. Six, approval to adopt standards for high school course, modern and contemporary literature. Seven, approval to adopt standards for high school course journalism. Eight, approval to adopt standards for high school course senior rhetoric. Nine, approval of high school, middle school, and elementary school student handbooks for 2016-2017. Ten, appointment of the district representative to the Deep Page Area Occupational Education System, DAOES, for the 2016-17 organizational year. Eleven, approval banned uniform bid. Twelve, approval of athletic trainer services contract proposal. Thirteen, approval of the extension of the advertising agreement with site effects at Wheaton North and Wheaton Warrenville South. Fourteen, approval to set driver education fee at $250. Fifteen, approval of chart rules, food service management contract renewal. Sixteen, approval to switch phone service provider to Call One. Seventeen, approval to dispose of miscellaneous surplus assets. Eighteen, approval of compressor and installation bid Wheaton North High School. Nineteen, approval bid for roof replacements at Sandburg Elementary and Monroe Middle School and ROE permit applications. Twenty, approval bids for tuck pointing, basement infill, and chimney reduction at Whittier Elementary and the RE ROE permit application. Twenty-one, approval of resolution appointing treasurer and approving the treasurer's bond. Twenty-two, approval, excuse me, approval of treasurer's bond coverage. Twenty-three, approval of financial advisory agreement with PMA Financial Network. Twenty-four, approval of a resolution authorizing interfund loan from operations and maintenance fund to education fund. Twenty-five, adoption of board of education meeting calendar for 2016-2017. Twenty-six, approval of bills payable and payroll. Twenty-seven, approval of minutes, April 13, 2016, open and closed. April 27, 2016, open and closed. And approval to destroy recordings of closed sessions prior to December 2014 as allowable by law. And twenty-eight, approval of personnel reports to include employment, resignation, retirement, and leave of absence of administrative, certified, classified, and non-union staff. Are there any items board members want to move from the consent agenda? Hearing none. Any additional information from, from Dr. Schuler and his staff?
No, I think other than to say, obviously, the consent agenda was very long. There were a number of items on it, and we did have an opportunity, I think, to answer lots of questions that board members had about individual items. So, I know that those items have been thoroughly vetted, but no additional information.
Are there any comments or questions from board members with respect to consent items in this parameter?
I would just like to ask if there are any clarifications staff can give on the telephone service to answer the community question tonight. Not to argue, but just to clarify for us that we feel good that we're making a good choice here.
Sure. There's three large areas of savings in this. One is the PRI savings, just the cost of PRIs. We have eight of them. Call One comes in about $150 less per PRI per month. The tolls, which is the calls AT&amp;T charges us for those, and Call One, the tolls are included. So, you know, think of your cell phone with unlimited minutes. The actual calls, local and toll, are included on that. Call One also has a special agreement with the state, because they're only in Illinois, that there's no local fees or taxes on that. And then the last bit of it is the savings of the Centrex lines. They've worked out a plan to move quite a few of those, still 102 that we have, to the PRIs, and then only keeping, I think, 41 of them. Each one of those, the PRI savings is around $1,200 a month. The toll fees and taxes are about $1,500 a month, and the Centrex is about $1,100 a month. That's in its best-case scenario, or worst-case scenario. That's about, you know, there's estimates that show if we were to cancel more, that it would be larger than that. But after its first year, we're projecting somewhere between $40,000 and $50,000 savings a month. Or a year, sorry, a month. Wow, that'd be great. A year, a year.
So, for the first year, we're just about even paying that penalty?
Yeah, the first year will be a little, probably under $10,000, worst-case scenario savings from switching to pay the cancellation. The other thing that was stated too is it was a six-year contract. We actually upped that part of the contract last year. They're usually done in three years, so we're exiting this contract about two years early.
I would like us to think about in this next year, the school handbooks. I spent a lot of time reading them this past weekend, the different handbooks, and, you know, I have brought my daughters, and it goes from pages eight to 59. That's a lot of reading that we're expecting our parents and our students to sign this handbook, that they've read this, and that they agree, and that they understand it. And I think there's some language in there that can get cleaned up. For example, my daughter is in a boot, and I sent her, because I read it this weekend, with $5 to get her elevator key, and they said to her, "Why are you bringing this in? We don't follow. We haven't followed it in years." But yet, it's still in the handbook. So, I think we can go through and maybe clean it up a little bit to things that are relevant. I feel that, you know, if we're asking parents and students to sign something, we want them to actually read it, and this is really a lot of reading to do. So, and I'd also like to maybe clean up a little bit of common language and, you know, what's written for, you know, the things that are common across the different buildings, you know, the different grade levels, to be able to say, word it in the same way, you know, when the intent is actually the same. So, if we could spend some time this year, maybe, in cleaning that up a little bit so that modernize it and so that, you know, make sure that what's in here, we're actually enforcing.
Yeah, I just would echo the same sentiment. I mean, I went through it, had a similar reaction to a lot of the things. We're asking every parent in our school district of students currently to go through this. I think that using the word modernization is probably good. I mean, I think probably the only reason we were even having this on the agenda is because of the student discipline issue. And I recall, we've received some emails from parents, I think, in the last couple of years about the student ID. I remember something about a student ID, the bus pass, and it was a lost student ID that wasn't being followed by the local school either. So, I agree that, you know, we probably at this point need to approve it just because of the calendar, but over the next year, it certainly is probably worth a more in-detail look to make sure that it's consistent and, you know, a little less, you know, onerous because recognizing, you know, from a legal standpoint, there certainly is, we have to have a greater understanding.
And Dr. Schuler, to follow kind of the same question that Mrs. Zenthar asked with respect to Call One, consent item agenda, what is the background that you shared with us with respect to the buses and the contract approval under consent?
The bus is not under consent. I think that's under action item, so we will...
My mistake. So, we had a focus on reading the titles.
Okay. So, to the handbook piece as well, just for, I think, I'm worthy to understand it. Can you just kind of summarize the process that we go through? I think there are valid comments, and we certainly will do that, but I don't want to leave folks with the impression that that hasn't gone through annually a vetting process, so...
Thank you, Dr. Schuler. Each year, the administrators at each level read those books from cover to cover and made those appropriate edits. And you're right, each year, the book gets a little longer. Much of that has to do with additional mandates and additional requirements, and the majority is, are responsible for legal things that we have to be able to say that we've shared that whole technology section, which it onerous is part of the responsibility under statute that we have to share with people. We haven't, we probably could do a crosswalk between all three. We did that with the discipline section this year in response to SB 7, and we could certainly do that with all of those to make sure that those consist of things. They tried to word them based on the elementary, middle, and high school things, but certainly there's some things that we can probably clean up. I'm not sure it's going to get a lot shorter, but we may be able to make some of that language a little cleaner. But each administrator, each group looks at those completely, and then, as you saw in the background, the parent advisory, the parent staff advisory group went through it as well. We did miss the key thing and found that afterwards, and it'll go through one more edit before it goes to the publisher. The center publisher, they'll look at it one more time for punctuation and misspelling, but we'll do a crosswalk with those three next year to see if we can do some consistency.
Thank you, Dr. Roman. Any other comments or questions on the consent agenda? If not, I ask for a motion of a second to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Rooted by Mrs. Zenthar.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Crabtree. Mrs. Senator, would you please call a roll?
Mrs. Zenthar?
Yes.
Mrs. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mrs. Zenthar?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes, the motion passes. Now, we move on to action items. The first action item is approval of transportation services contract. Dr. Schuler?
Mr. Farley, introductory comments on transportation?
Sure, thank you, Dr. Schuler. This is the end of the third year of our contract with both sub-tran, who really provides our auto... We haven't, we probably could do a crosswalk between all three. We did that with the discipline section this year in response to SB seven, and we can certainly do that with all of those to make sure that those consist of things. They try to word them based on the elementary, middle, and high school things, but certainly there's some things that we can probably clean up. I'm not sure it's going to get a lot shorter, but we may be able to make some of those, some of that language we're cleaning up. But each administrator, each group looks at those completely, and then, as you saw in the background, the parent advisory, the parent staff advisory group went through it as well. We did miss the key thing and found that afterwards, and it'll go through one more edit before it goes to the publisher. The publisher, they'll look at it one more time for punctuation and misspelling, but we'll do a crosswalk with those three next year to see if we can do some consistency.
Thank you, Dr. Schuler. Any other comments or questions on the consent agenda? If not, I ask for a motion on a second to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Move by Mrs. Intihar.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Crabtree. Mrs. Sender, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Intihar?
Yes.
Mrs. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mr. Gambiani?
Yes.
Mrs. Kakiel?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes, the motion passes. Would you have a consent agenda item two, the approval of a resolution concerning depositaries? This is separated out because Mr. Matheson, if he is here, would have had to abstain from this. What's the background information on this, Dr. Schuler?
Mr. Farley, come in on that.
Anyway, we just asked the board to approve the list of depositaries that the school district does business with, and as you mentioned, Mr. Matheson sits on the board, and we bank trust him as one of the depositaries, so we choose for the consent agenda two, so he can abstain from that vote, but...
Any questions or comments from board members? Hearing none, I ask for a motion on a second to approve the consent item agenda as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Paulson.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Kakiel. Mrs. Sender, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mrs. Kakiel?
Yes.
Mr. Gambiani?
Yes.
Mrs. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mrs. Intihar?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes, the motion passes. Now we move on to action items. The first action item is the approval of transportation services contract. Dr. Schuler?
Mr. Farley, introductory comments on transportation?
Sure, thank you, Dr. Schuler. This is the end of the third year of our contract with both Subtrans, who provides our out-of-district special ed transportation, as well as Illinois Central, who provides our in-district regular ed special education, as well as out-of, or in-district special education. We went out to bid, we're seeing what a lot of our neighboring school districts are seeing as their bids are coming in as well, and that's double-digit increases. And really, the factor that's at play here is probably a sign of the times of the economy getting better, that the ability for companies to attract and retain drivers has been a significant challenge. Other competitors in the marketplace have increased costs, or increased salaries, which has increased costs, and that's obviously passed back onto school districts. So we went out to bid, we did receive one bid for base bid A, which is our in-district regular. We had two very competitive bids for the in-district special ed. We were staying with the incumbent, and the out-of-district was one bidder, and that was Subtrans. So, we're asking the board to approve the contract tonight. Please know a couple of things. First, we've already had conversations with Illinois Central to talk about ways we can continue to streamline and find efficiencies to try and save costs associated with this increase. I always, when I'm doing the levy, or talking about the Consumer Price Index, get on my soapbox about how the price of gas really doesn't impact us, but in this case, we do have some impact because of the fuel escalator clauses in the contract. We have a budget this year of $350,000 and only spent $10,000 because the price of gas has gone down. So we will be able to absorb some of this increase because of, and we'll walk the board through all of this as we go through the budgeting process. But we are going to look for efficiencies in the other, as Dr. Knopfless about the out-of-district special ed, and we're looking for efficiencies there as well to try and absorb this cost. But really, it's driven by what's happening in the marketplace, and again, we're seeing other districts that have gone out and seen the same thing happen. So we are going to continue to monitor it closely and to try and find in ways, as we always do, streamline and find efficiencies. Maybe if any questions, I'll try and answer.
Is the fuel escalation, did that change at all, or is that on the same basis as it was this year?
And we kept it the same, the index was kept the same.
Any other questions or comments?
Bill, I just have one question. I see here, legal notice was published, and bid packages were sent to 12 potential vendors. I mean, I know you don't have a silver ball, I mean, you're not clairvoyant here, but crystal ball, but why do you think we only got technically one response to the bid?
We are surprised, you know, we are a big district, so you're not going to get some of the smaller bus companies that will want to bid our service. We run over 300 regular routes a day, so whoever's going to be out there has got to be pretty large, straight out. We were very surprised for a student to bid this. I would tell you that our, you know, our own bus company, who we currently use, was surprised Illinois, excuse me, for a student to bid this. So we did reach out to them, and they were concerned about fleet and some other issues. They were our previous vendor, so we were very surprised. They have a Glen Allen terminal, but they chose not to bid, and I think we may be the only district that chose not to bid in all the pool of different ones out there, so very surprised that we weren't, there wasn't more competition at that base today.
So were there a lot of other school districts in the area also bidding at the same time? I know, and I feel, you know, the timing of the bid and the amount of work that's out there has a big impact on whether people choose to bid. Does that initiate a wider run?
I think we were out in a timely fashion. We did Glenbarre open right before us, Tatavia opened after us, other ones around the same time, so we were kind of right there in the middle of it all. You know, again, if we, as we look at it going forward, we may choose to get out a little bit earlier in the future, just to make sure that we have, you know, that are, try and get as competitive as we can. But I wouldn't say we were late by any stretch of the means.
Seeing no further, hearing no further questions or comments, I ask for a motion on a second to approve the transportation services contract bid.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Crabtree.
Second.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mrs. Intihar. Mrs. Sender, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Intihar?
It's okay. Yes.
Mrs. Kakiel?
Yes.
Mr. Gambiani?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes, the motion passes. The second action item before us is the approval of a resolution providing for the issue of not to exceed $34,865,000 in general obligation refunding school bonds, series 2016 of the district, for the purpose of refunding certain outstanding bonds of the school district, providing for the levy of a direct annual tax sufficient to pay the principal and interest on said bonds, and authorizing the sale of the bonds to the purchaser thereof. Dr. Schuler? Oh, I need to announce that. I need to announce that. So, Dr. Schuler?
So, I can just look at a background, and then, Mr. Farley, can you comment? Dating back to February 2014, the board looked at a long-term strategy to refinance debt and to cure what was kind of a ski slope in your debt service payments. And so the district at that time looked at what it knew was going to be a multi-step process to refinance that debt, and this is the second of, I think, four ultimate steps in that process. So, Mr. Farley, any additional background you want to provide?
I think that's perfect.
And I think one thing to point out on this, this is just truly refinancing existing bonds at a lower rate. This is not extending out debt service at all, and the bulk of the savings are going to be used to address kind of the first year where there's a marked increase up in that ski slope. That's what the savings will be split and chucked in that one year.
Just to respond to a question that was raised at the last CAC meeting about this bond refinancing, the members of the CAC council advised that there would be about $2.5 million savings if we repelled that and reduced the amount of the outstanding bonds. One member of the council asked, "Well, why don't we just use that $2.5 million applied to capital needs?" And I asked Dr. Schuler that question, and by school code, we are not able to do a cash-out refunding. We can capture the savings by issuing offsetting non-referendum bonds that could fund the capital improvements, but in essence, we'd be liable to pay it if they fall. So we don't get ahead of it at all by doing that, so that's why it's not being used, the $2.5 million savings are not being used for capital projects.
So, just to clarify, most of this, almost all this $2.5 million is saved in, I think it was the 2018 year, is that correct? So I got a question on, I guess it's slide, or page nine in the PMA report, where they show the current debt service, I don't know if it's possible, but, so the current debt service structure up to year 2024, and there's a blue bar and a green bar, green bars future years, future phase two, phase three, and phase four restructuring when we get there? No? Potential future, oh, that's...
That's D set.
That's potential D set, yeah.
The board chooses to access the D set.
So the blue, the blue bars on an annual basis are, will be projected to reduce the debt curve to, based on this one and future phase three and phase four refinancing. So that's, that curve drops down through this essentially, which would impact the debt service levy that we have to incur every year. That's outside of the operating.
Any additional comments or questions? If not, I ask for a motion on a second. The resolution that we're about to vote on sets forth the parameters for the issuance of said bonds and sale thereof by designated officials of the district, and summarizes the pertinent terms of said parameters, including the specific parameters governing the manner of sale, length of maturity, and rates of interest, purchase price, and tax levy for said bonds. I have a motion on a second to approve a resolution providing for the issue of not to exceed $34,865,000 general obligation refunding school bonds, series 2016 of the district, for the purpose of refunding certain outstanding bonds of the school district, providing for the levy of a direct annual tax sufficient to pay the principal and interest on said bonds, and authorizing the sale of the bonds to the purchaser thereof.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Paulson, seconded by Mrs. Intihar. Mrs. Sender, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Crabtree needs to read.
Yes, it's now your turn to read.
The resolution providing for the issue of not to exceed $34,865,000 general obligation refunding school bonds, series 2016 of Community Unit School District Number 200, N. Page County, Illinois, for the purpose of refunding certain outstanding bonds of said school district, providing for the levy of a direct annual tax sufficient to pay the principal and interest on said bonds, and authorizing the sale of the bonds to the purchaser thereof.
We have a motion on a second, so Mrs. Sender, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mrs. Intihar?
Yes.
Mrs. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mr. Gambiani?
Yes.
Mrs. Kakiel?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes, the motion passes. We now move into discussion item, and that's the continuation of our discussion on the facility master plan. Dr. Schuler?
Thank you, Mr. Veromen. So, just kind of a quick recap, both for the board and anybody here tonight, following the discussion on the master facility plan. The master facility plan was delivered to the board at your meeting on April the 13th of the Blinnis report that had a number of different items and opportunities in it. We had two discussions thus far on the master facility plan, one at the committee, the whole meeting on the 27th, and then the board engaged in a full-day committee, the whole meeting on April the 30th, to, again, make sure that they had a chance to process everything in that report, all of the priorities, and then have some discussion. And so, I wanted to first mention to the board, we don't often have full-day workshop sessions, and so the minutes from that session were a little bit longer than the minutes typically are from meetings. We included in your agenda packet this evening a copy of the draft minutes from that meeting, and I would encourage all board members, if you haven't done so already, to please take a careful look at those minutes. We certainly want to make sure that they accurately capture kind of the volume of that discussion on the 30th, and so, again, I would encourage you to take a careful look at that. I guess a suggestion would be if you have feedback, you've got corrections or adjustments to the meeting minutes from the 30th, and can get those to me, suggestion to have to process it this way. We typically handle all adjustments to meeting minutes just through our office with Mrs. Sender, with through your board clerk, but given, again, kind of the volume of these minutes, I was going to suggest that any suggested changes to those meeting minutes come to us, and that we have the facility committee take one final look at those minutes before they come back for approval at your next meeting. Again, just essential, I think, that we make sure that we have an accurate representation of what happened at that meeting, I would say, so... Okay?
I just don't like the precedent that that sets. I think that, you know, minutes are minutes, and they should be handled in the same way that other minutes are handled. Now, you know, if there's a difference of opinion, and you want to, you know, check with the president or whatever, I think that's fine, but to put another filter on minutes, I think is, I think it sets a dangerous precedent that we maybe don't want to go down that path.
I understand that. I did go through the minutes in great detail, and I think there's a lot of clarifications and consistencies that can be developed, and my fear is that we put minutes out there that don't have a little bit of that additional filter, that it would be maybe misinterpreted incorrectly by some members of the community, or even some members of the board. So I think there'd be great value in kind of putting another filter on those and make sure that it's not just minutes, but it's also kind of a guide to how we're going to move forward, because I don't think the minutes has, I went through a brief discussion, I don't think the minutes are very clear.
I don't think they're either, but I don't disagree that the community may need more, but the community typically gets various succinct minutes from all of our meetings, and all of those, it goes through the review process, yes, typical. If the facilities committee wants to write a separate report based on those minutes, I don't have any problem with that, but I don't think the facilities committee should embellish, and I don't mean stretch, I mean, I just mean, I don't think they should put their lens on those meeting minutes. I think those meeting minutes, you just stand as minutes, and the facilities committee wants to make a report based on those minutes, saying, "Here are the outcomes," and be more specific. I think that's the road to go with that, not having a board committee bless or not bless minutes. That was a meeting of the whole board, not of the facilities committee. It's a sticky point, but it's a point that I think, I just don't think we want to set that precedent, that we're going to take minutes of a meeting that we all had, and have a two-person committee review them and put their standard approval on them. I don't think that's correct procedure.
Were you asking us just to review them, and so when we really decide what our priorities are, use it or change it, or you really were saying, we want to, what do we want to put out as minutes?
No, I was just asking all board members to take a look, take a careful look at the minutes, and make sure that the minutes reflect the conversation that took place at that meeting on the 30th. I guess I, from my perspective, I wasn't suggesting, and I certainly wouldn't want the impression that I'm suggesting that a set of minutes for the entire board are being, you know, crafted in some way by a committee. I just, I just am anticipating that we might get more feedback on this set of minutes than we do the other. If you're not comfortable with a committee doing that, certainly another strategy would be to, I can work with the executive group from the board to look at any of those suggestions, and, you know, I'm just wanting to make sure that the minutes accurately reflect the board's discussion from that day.
In all of our minutes, all of our minutes have been summaries. I know there've been times when I, as a board member, have given a long, lengthy explanation, and in the minutes, it's a very succinct sentence. I think these minutes should be written just like those minutes. And I think if we, if the facilities committee wants to write a report, here's the outcome of the meeting, here's where we're going from here, and wants to put some details behind those minutes, I'm firmly in favor of that. I just don't want to set the precedent that for some meetings, we're going to do it this way, and for other meetings, we're going to do it a different way. I think that's dangerous and a slippery slope.
I'm fine with that. I mean, I've given, I just heard with Dr. Schuler this morning, pretty extensive comments on, everybody has the opportunity, we're going to get another point in the next meeting where we have to approve the minutes, so we'll have another one through. So, I mean, it was what, a seven-hour meeting with lots of conversation going on, so I appreciate how difficult gathering that all information was, much of it in a different language that we took to talk about in a board meeting here, so I'm comfortable with that process. I agree with you, I just want to make sure that it is clear and reflects the conversation.
What I think I would prefer is to have everyone write their comments to the minutes that Dr. Schuler circulated, and the executive committee or the board, secretary, vice president, president, will work with Dr. Schuler and Mrs. Sender to see if we can then come up with a final draft of the minutes to present to the board at the next meeting for approval. And I would encourage the facilities committee, if they either want to report or submit their own collective comments to those minutes, to do so as well, but that's the other filter I'm on. Until a point, we'll take it, Mrs. Sender.
So, the second thing that we wanted to do tonight was bring back to you and the buckets, we called them buckets, at the meeting on the 30th. Those were kind of the project groupings that were identified by level, make sure that we captured those accurately. We pulled together, I guess, again, what I would call at this point still concept costs for each of those buckets, so these are the dollar amounts that were identified as part of the master facility plan report, and I think the goal this evening is, one, to make sure that we have those buckets identified accurately, and, two, that charge is clear in terms of follow-up information for what kind of additional detail information that we need to begin to process those. So, again, just by way of summary, out of the conversation, this little pie chart just gives you a feel for kind of where the project buckets fell. So, other middle school, middle school projects represented about 37% of what was identified, early childhood Jefferson, about 22%, secure entries, about 2% of the overall budget at this point, the LLC is 15%, science labs, 6% of the overall project buckets, accessibility and collaboration, 2 and 3%, and then there's some other miscellaneous pieces that we'll get at. So for the elementary and... So for the elementary and early childhood level, the project buckets that came out were, one, looking at the early learning center, early childhood center. Sandberg Elementary School had a little more complex redesign in order to be able to address both the secure entry and the LLC concept and some general accessibility, circulation, safety within the building. So it was kind of, it's a standalone project. The elementary LLCs in total came in at a concept cost of 4.9 million. Elementary furniture, so in the furniture concept, we did pull together a furniture plan for each building that looked at every instructional space within that building and some standardized costs in terms of student desks. There was some discussion on the 30th about making sure that if we're looking at a furniture solution for our classroom, that it also encompasses any related teacher's space or for storage needs associated with kind of the newer 21st century furniture models. So again, at the elementary level, furniture was a bucket and projected cost of 2.9 million. And then secure entries were 1.2 million. Put them all together and then collaborative spaces. Again, those were not identified at every building. Some of the buildings already have those spaces built in, but there were several buildings where that was a part of the plan. And that was a bucket at 1.2 million. At the middle school level, so again, these are, these are your, the educational assessment designs only. These are not incorporating any of the capital costs. We'll get to those a little bit later. But Franklin, obviously, was the biggest project at the middle schools with a concept cost of a little over 22 million. Monroe was a project identified at nine and a half million, concept cost. Edison, just a little over three. And then again, the middle school furniture used the same analysis to look at all the middle school classrooms and what a potential furniture plan would look like in that, you know.
Does that include Hubble?
That does include Hubble. And then at the high school level, and that one bubble, it's really, really small. It's kind of hard to see from back in the back, apologize. But high school, again, we've got a furniture plan for the high school. The Weeden-Warrenville South Library Learning Center was identified at a project at a little over a million. And then the Weeden-North Media Lab, I think is 300,000. I can't really see it from here. Those are the three high school projects. And then on the capital side, and JR, if you want to come up, I'm going to let you elaborate on this a little bit. And the buckets that we pulled together here, we pulled out just what are the condition one items within the capital report. So the condition one items alone for year one, total a little over $10 million. Year two, condition one, year two, a little over $10 million. And then condition one, year three, a little bit over $30 million. But one of the things that I asked JR to do in advance of this meeting and talk to the board a little bit about is beyond the condition one items. Those are kind of the immediate, most immediate needs that are then identified through that capital report. What are some of kind of the highest priority condition two items that either would make sense to address at the same time that some of the other projects are at play? Or just items that would be higher in the priority list if the board is kind of looking at attacking that whole capital projects piece? So JR?
Thank you, Dr. Schuler. I'll preface my comments by saying that the numbers I'm going to present do not include the middle schools and the Jefferson, Woodland, SSC and Sandberg. As we look at those as different projects, because of the size and scope of the educational side. So I won't bore you with the details by each school. But in general, we looked at all the condition ones for each school. And then like Dr. Schuler said, what makes sense to do if we're going to do it? So for instance, at some schools, one school in particular, in condition one, we have about $1.3 million of roofs. Another 500 grand finishes up all the roofs. It kind of makes sense from an economic sense to pull them all together, all at once to do it. So we pull those twos into the ones, get them all done at once and finish that. We're doing, at one school, we're doing all the ceilings at Lowell, all our building. Well, we've always wanted to replace the HVAC systems in the classroom with vertical unit vents like we have at North, Johnson and Hubble. And to do that, you have to deduct the heat and cooling off the ceiling, which means you have to rip the ceiling out. So if we're going to take the ceilings out, it makes a lot of sense to do all that at once. So we looked at where things made sense. At one school, we're doing a lot of asphalt. And it's at Johnson, and the school's 27 years old. And if we're going to replace the asphalt in front there, as you all know, it needs to be done, we might as well get the concrete done at the same time. So we put all that down. So we pulled the concrete door. So to give you a total, for these buildings, minus eight, I mentioned earlier, it's about $30 million of condition one and anywhere from eight and a half to $12 million of condition two.
Is that making sense between those numbers and what you're showing up there?
So that is a condition one of the entire district. That includes every building.
Right.
I've excluded from my discussion the four middle schools because those are, those projects are fairly large projects on their own. We need basic decisions on what we do with the middle schools. And then I didn't include Jefferson. Again, that's its own standalone project. And then Woodland, SSC and Sandberg. So the remaining buildings, the condition one totals 30 million, 29 million here. And then condition two and three totals anywhere between 8.5 and 11.9 million.
Chair, the bubbles though, that are shown here for condition one, two and three, those bubbles include the middle schools or don't include the middle schools?
Yeah, what you're looking at on the screen includes all the districts.
Okay. So when you take those out, you take out the middle schools, Jefferson, Woodland, what's the other ones?
SSC and Sandberg.
SSC and Sandberg. Instead of having 51.7 million, you've got 28?
33 million.
Okay. So that's, so you go condition one to years one through two.
What that? What that doesn't include, but again, just trying to come up, another way to look at this in terms of potential project buckets is what it means is that this Sandberg bucket, which are really the educational-related improvements, that number might get a little bit bigger when you tie in the capital items that would be associated with it. So that's one of the things that I think would be a very intentional follow-up, would be refining the Sandberg plan specifically. Same would be true on the middle school side. So these include just the educational-related items. Obviously, if we tie in all of the capital items for those three schools as well, those circles get a little bit bigger. But then that's a little different way of, the way that JR had of kind of looking at the capital side to not just look at the condition one stuff, but where does it make sense to go a little bit deeper on that side?
Franklin Middle School was one of my adopted schools that I talked about. And it's the biggest bubble I own, at least, that part, I guess. And when you put the capital needs together and you put the educational needs together, there's a lot of overlap, I believe, in those numbers. And that's what Nicholas associates will help us with. But I also believe there's a term called cost avoidance. That if you do a project like Franklin, there's a lot of items in category or condition two in years four through eight that are just going to go away. So that number would come down substantially based on the work that we would do as part of it. So it's kind of the same concept, bring it forward. So when we look at these, for example, the middle schools, but really especially Franklin, you're going to see a lot of synergy between the work. The other thing is when we look at Jefferson, there's roughly $5 million in the condition one that has to get done. And if we don't do the additional renovation scheme, that $5 million goes away. So there's a lot of overlapping circles or buckets here as we move forward and try to develop what are we going to consider doing in the first place.
So can you guess for Franklin? You know, would you ever get, I know we kind of touched on build a new one versus all this updating. Is there any sense to that?
So no, I, well, I think we need to pull those numbers together and really see where that kind of aggregate bubble comes in for the middle school. So I mean, that's really where we've got Nicholas focusing their greatest energy around those big projects that we want to really spend a lot of time cost estimating, honestly, to have, I don't want to call them smaller buckets because they're important, but you know, some of the pieces around like LLCs and furniture and those elements, I think you can feel fairly good about where those cost estimates sit right now. And it's really those bigger projects that would include Sandberg, Franklin, Edison and Monroe, where I think we'd want to capture that energy. But what we would do, if, I guess, the way that JR's talked about the capital needs, if that makes sense to you, just in terms of kind of keeping track or capturing these project buckets, I would replace this look at the condition one items with the way that JR looked at the condition one items, which would be all the buildings absent, where those big projects are. And then we will, we'll come back to, whoops, I keep going the wrong way. I apologize. We will come, we'll come back to these as we kind of pull or refine costs together and try to give you at your June meeting, just one project bucket for Franklin with the first look, one project bucket for Monroe, one for Edison and one for Sandberg.
I agree, that's absolutely the right way to do it. When you're in a building, there's no, there's no point in restricting yourself to one condition, year one or year two, when you have other things that can impact it. It's going to be much, it's going to be a significant cost savings to do it all at one time rather than have to come back two, three, four years later. So I think it's right.
JR, just to make sure I have wrote these numbers down quickly. If I rolled in the condition two items, or when you roll in the condition two items, that makes sense to address when you're doing this work at the buildings that were considering other than Sandberg and the middle schools? That, those condition two items are between 8.5 million and 11 million?
Yeah. 11, 9.
And the condition one cost for those buildings is about 30 million?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. So the condition two was again 10 point?
8.5.
8.5, thank you.
11.9. Somewhere in there.
I'm not the street mind, everybody. These are just estimates at this point in time?
Yes, very, very early, very term. They're not cost.
And Chair, just to get on the record again, the other category for capital is primarily plumbing, correct?
Plumbing, concrete, fencing, fire alarm, ceilings.
But primarily plumbing, am I right in saying that's like a big chunk of it?
Yeah, I actually just took that all, just took it out. I don't have it. Plumbing is a big one. Yeah, there's a lot of the AVA, bathrooms.
Okay, when you're talking about other in the capital, then?
Yes.
When you're talking about other in the educational?
I'll defer that to Dr. Schuler.
Are there too big, like there's a 50% of other in the education? On the first side. District-wide educational going into that category, other middle school?
Those are middle, so those are the middle school improvements, that 37%?
Okay.
Those are your projects at the three middle schools. What's the 13%?
The 13% really covers any of the projects that don't fall into those other categories.
Right, right.
So it might be circulation improvements or office renovations. Sandberg would be included in there as well, yeah.
So does that mean that the secured entry for Sandberg is really in that other and that in the secured entries, 2%?
Yeah, because it's a whole project, yeah.
Okay, okay. I just like, it's a lot of other?
Yeah.
You know, and sometimes others usually small compared to the rest of everything. So I wanted to make sure I understood it.
So I guess again, question, just I can recap the buckets that we've captured. Does that reflect accurately of what the board was interested in kind of seeing in these concept? I mean, that captures everything from Saturday that we talked about being able to kind of capture into project options. Did I miss anything? Have we missed anything?
No, I, my recollection is those are the right buckets. The early childhood solutions number we show up there is based on a renovation expansion option, which I believe we all agreed upon. Compare that number to another solution, it doesn't make any sense. So it would get bigger, look, margin would get bigger.
And I'm wondering, I'm wondering if we should keep putting that up there? If we've decided we're not going to do it? I mean, shouldn't we have something else up there based on something else? I mean, I, I mean, do we need to take a vote to say we're going to build a new? That if this project moves forward, we would choose, based on the economics of the situation, a new early childhood center versus a renovation expansion option? Because I kind of want to make sure that we start telling our community as we're making decisions, as we're talking about things and eliminating options, that this is what we're doing. And I'm thinking that the more we keep this out there, the more they have in their heads that this is where we're headed. And I'm starting to get a little bit nervous about that.
So I guess a couple things in terms of next steps. So next part of the discussion is on early childhood. So one of the things that board asked on Saturday was to take a look at any other existing district 200 school sites that could possibly accommodate kind of a joint venture with an early learning center. And so Michael did take a look at that. Michael, I don't know if you want to make any kind of general comments, but the board saw that it was with the board packet we gave you, that test fit. I think the kind of the quick synopsis is there's not a site that jumps out as a very good option. And a big part of that is you just don't have a lot of open space available to you in your sites. And our school buildings, I think are, you know, for the most part are sized appropriately. We don't have huge school sites that would likely accommodate an additional space absent taking away a big chunk of those playfields. So in our view, the recommendation is that there's really not a good viable option for that. But Michael, you want to expand on that at all?
No, I think that hits pretty much at the root of what we saw. You know, you have very well utilized sites for all of your schools that really have, there are places that you could put a building, but that really detracts from the utilization of the site and how the school will operate. And that's what's shown in those diagrams.
The second attachment that was with your board packet, you can pull that. There's a, with the agenda item, there's another attachment.
Thank you, I'm sorry, I just.
So just to kind of talk about that a little bit more depth, the idea that we talked about on April 30th, for people who worked there in the audience or watching on the TV. TV, was, is there some kind of synergy that we can create by locating our early childhood program on the site of an existing building and maybe recapture some of the space such as gymnasiums or libraries from the existing school? Couple challenges with that from the, just from the shared usage space. I don't even know that any of our elementary schools would say that their gymnasiums are underutilized at all. So, that notion is, would have to be really explored a lot deeper about that, what is the impact on the elementary school? But the other thing is, you know, putting at a large building, fifty thousand, forty-eight thousand square feet on an existing site, you're going to create other cost implications that have to do with tying into the existing building, adding parking on top of the parking that's either relocated or, you know, relocated because of the addition, traffic circulation, possible roadway improvements, the impact of stormwater, which will have to be dealt with very substantially if we were to put it on an elementary site. You don't have room to do a stormwater detention, so they're going to put it underground, which is going to be a huge increase. Complete loss or relocation of place space for the schools. That's a pretty important element of our elementary school program is to have that exterior place space. So, I don't believe that even if you were able to find a site that fit, that the cost savings would really be that different. I would conceivably even be more to do it on an existing site versus building, building a new building, clean, clean site somewhere else. So, you know, I looked at it in great detail, appreciate the level of analysis you guys went through so quickly, but I agree that there's no existing sites, elementary or middle, that it really fits and would even be functional.
Just to explore a little bit more, Brad, there was a suggestion that perhaps something could be done adding on to Whittier because for, with kind of use of their gym, but all according to the analysis that Utah, our, all our elementary schools are using their gym facilities pretty much all day long.
Yes, that's correct. And, and the Whittier site also, the, the gymnasium's located at a far, the far distance from any open land here. So, that's, that's one challenge with any addition to, to this building as well as any site accidents and, and parking, as Brad mentioned. Parking is pretty limited there as it is, so the impact on the neighborhood would be, would be also pretty large.
I, I guess I would argue that gym, the gym thing. I, I taught at Whittier when Whittier hit six hundred and fifty students and Whittier's now, what, four hundred students? And we were able to accommodate with the two gyms that are, the, the two gyms over there. I understand the flooding issue here and, and originally, I think I was the one who said maybe we could do something with this SSC, you know, build on to, to Whittier to be able to capture and, and be able to use that. I happened to be out in Hubble today and I was looking out a window and Mr. Fuglington was standing there, there with me and I saw this large field. And I asked who, who was this at? And he said that was, the VP had donated that back to the district. So, is, what, there's like, there's like a big.
He didn't donate one of those.
That's what he said, is, it's, it looks like a, like a, like a, like a corn, like a giant cornfield. And I was looking out of a window on the second floor, so I was in the educational building and I said, what is that and who owns that? And he said, we own that VP, gave that to us.
We have an intergovernmental agreement that we worked through the city of marketing to capture some VP land to use for our site water detention because we didn't have that. So, we, we have a joint agreement to use that and we have to maintain it, but it's for site storage for our property. It's, it looks like a, it's, it's a detention base and it's got, I know that it just got mowed down quite well, so, so that, that's usually holding water or something like that. It's not anything we can go on and use per se.
Getting back to one, getting back to one other thing that Mrs. Crabtree asked to have explored in relationship to this site was, you know, building an early childhood center here and then relocating the SSC to leased space. And I was just, in my view, if I think about it, I would think that an early childhood center would have to have a larger footprint, correct me if I'm wrong, than this building has. And we would not want a two-story building for, you know, two or three-year-olds who have physical problems. So, I mean, is that, was that looked at, was that considered? Because I know that was one of the things that we talked about was wanting to perhaps abandon this as an office building, it's an old office building, we can rent office space anywhere. What about putting it here or selling the land over there and everything in here? So, I mean, could you give me the reason that won't work? You know, just for the public and for?
Yeah, Mike, I don't know if you've looked specifically at, at a footprint here. Number one, I think just due to stormwater issues, I don't think you could expand the footprint of this building. So, anything you did within this space, I think would have to fit within kind of the existing footprint of this, this space. And I think that would be very difficult just given the tier grade of, of this building. We could, we could certainly explore the issue of, could you expand the footprint here? But I don't, I don't know that that would be possible to do, the stormwater issues.
Right. But the footprint of an early childhood center would be definitely larger than the existing footprint of the SSC is, am I right in assuming that?
Correct.
Okay.
What is the square footage of this building?
Nineteen thousand. The only, you know, you build, if it was a new building, which there's other things on the table that we haven't talked about yet tonight, or build a new building there versus build a new building here, it's basically the same construction cost, but then add significant impact of stormwater and, and parking, traffic circulation, neighbor, neighbor impact, we had that last time, you're going to have it here, bully the potential loss of playfields that are used every night, I believe in the summer. So I don't, I don't know that, you're basically building the same building with the exception of maybe some couple thousand square foot difference if we're able to share the gymnasium. I think you create so many additional complications by putting it here versus putting it up, if it was the Jefferson site, that I'll be here to see the cost anyways.
I wasn't suggesting that, I was just suggesting that we let the public know that it was considered so that if we do end up where we ended up last time, which was building in the building on the same site, they know that we considered building it somewhere else and moving our offices elsewhere. I, I didn't think the answer would be yes, we could do it right here, but I wanted to be sure. And I wanted the public to be sure.
And if we had, if we were able to do that, since we're talking about it in public, and took out lease, and then that lease payment falls into our operating budgets, which has to be found on, so it impacts, impacts cut somewhere else. So that's a different complication, isn't it, that's true.
And I understand that, but I think if the public knows we're going to do that, if we build that into our plan, then we do that. I mean, I don't, I don't think we should make a decision on what happens to this building based on where it falls as a line item in our budget. I think we should make that based on good common sense. And then, if the, if the community believes that our good common sense would be good common sense, then I think we will support it. I have faith in our community that I can do that. If, if it makes more sense to lease space for offices, which are just offices, then, you know, there are other, other districts have done that and it, you know, it makes sense to do that. If it's, if it's an economic advantage to us to do that, whether it comes out of this budget or that budget, who cares?
I, I think it's worth doing a little bit more detailed analysis of that. The other benefit of that would be if you're able to do that here, then you vacate or abandon existing Jefferson sites, so when we do that, there's, there's probably some community benefit in doing that. So, I guess I'm, I guess I'm talking myself, or maybe you're talking me into it.
Yeah.
You know, if we were to look at a little bit more detailed analysis of this site, recognizing that there's pretty substantial complications, whether it's even feasible, I'm not opposed to it. I think of all the elementary school sites, it's the only one, the only one that's even, you know, maybe worth looking at.
And my other thought was, since we're considering our facilities as a whole, then maybe, maybe we do as part of our comprehensive strategic facility plan, if we don't end up with an early childhood center on this site, we still end up with an early childhood center, let's say there is now, and then we still consider, do we really want to keep investing in this property here? Or do we want to just sell it and, and lease space? And I, and I realize that, that. Oh, I'm sorry, I thought I had it on. I must have hit it off. I, I realize that, you know, maybe the city would want to buy it, but I would think that if they would want it for stormwater detention, retention, whatever you want to call it, I would think they would have to give us a fair market value for it. And when you take, when you seize property for that reason, I don't, I don't know. I just don't know, I just think we should explore it. Because eventually we have to do something with this building. Right? I mean, it's in disrepair and floods and.
Yeah, there, there are capital repairs that, again, are, we have, have that, those items identified and incorporated as part of the capital plan, but certainly can do that. So, it, let me, I think kind of summarize where I think that we were at in terms of this. So, again, we are going to look at, at a, again, look at a refined concept cost for the three individual middle school projects that pulls together the capital and the educational improvements. We're going to return with a refined Sandberg number that pulls those two pieces together. We're going to take a look at, at, I think, what JR shared with you tonight in terms of that look at the, the capital side. So absent those, we'll, we'll capture that accurately in a bucket. And then, we're going to return with a refined concept plan around Jefferson Early Learning Center. And again, just based on the conversation last time, there are still two active considerations and then one concept that we haven't completely dismissed, active consideration being a new building. Obviously, look at a, at a revised concept for that. We're going to look at, at a, running a test fit on this site to see if it is in fact a doable option. And then the concept from the last time, we haven't found another available piece of property in the school district that could be retrofit, but we are still looking actively open to, to that concept if, if we do identify another piece of property that could be renovated into an early learning center. But just in terms of, of bringing you new concept information, we are going to focus on developing that new building option, relooking at that to make sure there's an updated cost associated with it, and then we're going to run, run a test fit on this property.
Can I, can I also ask that we look at something with Woodland? For example, you know, i- is there a place elsewhere within our district to do what Woodland does to be able to say, maybe we want to sell that property and be able to apply it to something else? I mean, if we're having the conversations about the SSC, then we should look at all of our facilities.
Yes. Yeah, yeah, we, and we, that's a, that's been a part of our conversation to, to some degree where there's potentially available space to relocate a couple of things within Woodland, kind of depend on what happens with the rest of the plan that, that we're talking about. But, but yes, we will make sure Woodland is an active part of that conversation.
Just to continue the list on early childhood, so those are the options we're going to continue looking at. We've taken three off the table. We've taken the concept of doing the addition of renovation on an existing building off the table. We've taken converting the industrial warehouse of the Far Ridge at Warrenville off the table. And then, and then the notion of kind of fitting, fitting our program somehow into the community center with the New Park District off the table. So, we've put new things on, we've taken several things off.
And I'd like to take that one step further, maybe my email to Dr. Schuler wasn't precise enough, but as I reflect on this conversation, as we're trying to be creative and thinking outside the box, my, my position is that we look at, as an example, Hubble. You know, that school is built for eleven hundred students. We've got about sixty percent capacity and those numbers are probably going down, if nothing more, flat. And it's a beautiful building and I would think that we need to give serious consideration on how we might be able to better utilize, not better, but utilize the remaining space that was built for eleven hundred students and how we can take that footprint in some way or form or fashion, I'm not smart enough to figure that out, but to utilize that space to accommodate an early childhood center arrangement, which daily has a hundred and fifty students in that current scenario. Well, you know, we call it two hundred a day, but it appears, again, I'm not smart enough to know all this stuff, but it appears that with a building that's sitting there that's at fifty-five or sixty percent occupancy and staying consistent, if not maybe going down, that might be good consideration to say, how can we effectively use an asset we've got that's very current, very new, very modern and, and put into that scenario a, a spot that could assist our needs for early childhood center? And I agree with Brad, I don't think we take anything off the table, especially you continue to look at other sites that we could renovate, lease, or whatever the case may be. But I think this has at least consideration. I'd like to have staff at least give that some thought and maybe give us some feedback.
One of the things that I think we certainly can do related to Hubble as we did for the other three middle schools is, well, for all of the buildings really absent Hubble in the report, we gave you a capacity analysis and a heat map. And we do that for Hubble, which I think will be kind of the first look at, at beyond just the numbers, what the utilization of space would be within the building. And I think that would inform that, that discussion.
And this leads me to something that I, has been percolating in my mind. I know that when we built Hubble, we built Hubble with the idea that the students from Lowell would be coming to Hubble and then the students from Lowell decided to go to Lincoln and then Lincoln feeds Edison. So, is there a possibility of moving students around to balance those buildings? I know we're, we're looking at a lot of money going into Edison. I don't believe that's because extra students are going there. I don't believe any of that money going into Edison is to accommodate an increase in enrollment. Am I correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
So, you know, but if, so if, if we did have that scenario where Edison was starting to get overcrowded and Hubble, you know, stayed low, but I know that, we purposely did not overbuild Hubble. It was a, it was a thing that kind of happened when the Dunedin North neighborhood switched over to go to Lincoln from Lowell. So, anyway, if, if any of our situations here can be solved through enrollment changes, that's obviously a lot less, it's painful, but it's a lot less expensive than, than adding bricks and mortar to all of that. So, so when we're looking in total, I would ask that we consider those issues as well.
Any further comments on our master facility plan discussion? If not, we'll move to the community engagement planning report.
Thank you. And so I'm, I'm a little bit of a stand-in here. Mrs. Lea Akino had to leave this, this evening. So, I'm going to just walk through a couple of pieces of, of her report and I think it's important to understand on this as, as an oral report and a discussion topic, I think tied in not only to the master facility plan discussion that we've just had, but some ongoing discussions that we've, we've, we've had on how it is that we can continue to be very focused on engaging our, our entire community. I think the, the goal tonight was, was just to solicit input on, you know, the overall master planning effort. And so, again, community engagement obviously is a, is a significant strand of the Vision 2018 strategic plan that the board has established. It was a, a significant piece of feedback out of the Engage 200 process and making sure that we continue to stay in tune with our, with our community. And it's obviously been a significant goal. And, and so, a big part of this in terms of celebrations for, for this year, certainly both through video and through print media, a big, we've invested a lot of time focused on the concept of facilities this year, but also being able to highlight some of the critical stories and developments out of our educational services department, future of instruction and technology, a lot of the, the new curriculum elements. Here, I'm a smidge out of my league as I'm talking about social media stats and I apologize for it, but Erica shared really the, the increase that we've had in our social media presence. We partnered with a couple of former employees to launch what we call an Emeritus 200 Facebook page. It's really means, uh, two former employees that were trying to stay connected with the district. We've got a little over 1,700 Facebook likes and a little over 2,000 Twitter followers. On our website, a couple of statistics just in terms of views to our website. That really continues to be the hub of, of communication efforts. And so, even as we've expanded other opportunities, I think the, the goal is you reach out through other electronic means is to ultimately draw people back to your website where you have the, the preponderance of your information that, that they can navigate through. And we've obviously continued to, to work with our, our local media outlets through monthly superintendent column. And we had over 70 media placements this year through them. We've also continued to, to expand our, our relationships with some of our other key partners. We've done a lot in conjunction with the Wheaton Chamber of Commerce this year, our Universal Access Initiative. We've worked hard with the, the Chamber of Commerce to, to address. We obviously continue to work closely with Park District and the, and the public library. And then, along the bottom are all of our municipal partners that, that again, we continue to work closely with. This year, I think the board is, is aware that we, I don't wanna say we recreated, because I know we did do one of them in the past, but we brought back the Realtor Breakfast this year. Joanne really helped us to connect to our Realtors and, and, and reengage them in that annual breakfast, which we plan to continue. We, we've continued to invest time both through board liaison and through staff liaisons to New 200 and that foundation and obviously our PTA councils that continue to be very instrumental, both in terms of the financial support they provide, but more important on a communication basis. Those are regular groups that we work closely with. And then, you heard the update earlier at the front-end meeting on the Citizens Advisory Committee, which was a, a new outreach this year. Family Day of Play. Joanne, you probably know, you can know more about Family Day of Play than I. How many want to offer on that type of the Early Learning Collaborative?
Sure. Yeah, we actually just talked about this today. There were over 70 families and, um, it was possible about 50 to 60 children at the Family Day of Play, which was on April 16. And it was held at Hubble. And the whole goal of this Family Day of Play was really to bring the community together and giving resources to our families, connecting them with, uh, basically any of the public agencies and service providers that can help families be, keeping an eye on their children and the developmental milestones and any resources and having them be prepared for kindergarten. That's one of our goals of our collaboration is to provide services and collaborative efforts for our students.
And then, community engagement, I know it's the board's role, where we did a number of community engagement sessions this year around the master facility plan in the fall. We did our State of the Schools and really took that out on the road to as many different civic organizations as we could, again, to try to reach beyond just the, the walls of our, our school building. And so, kind of the, the highlights, uh, as Erica has built kind of the work plan for this year. So you have this placemat-sized, uh, community engagement work plan. We've, we've continued to look at putting a heavier emphasis on some two-way opportunities for communication. So a lot of our weekly print communications are really one-way tools, tools that just go out and inform on, on things that are happening. But the, the expansion of the Realtor Breakfast, of Citizens Advisory Committee, of that State of the Schools roadshow are really about trying to expand some opportunities to also make sure that, that we enhance that two-way communication. Working on, with the support of the foundation, expanding an alumni outreach effort. Again, we've got a lot of District 200 alumni living in or very close to our area. And so, uh, we've, we've been launching in conjunction with 200, with the New 200 Alumni Outreach Effort, trying to, to build that. There is an alumni association in the area that there's been some conversation about, you know, how we can, we can really work together around that. Certainly, we anticipate some community engagement around this facility plan that we're talking about. So, um, as the, the plan continues to get developed, we're gonna have to be really, really cognizant on how we engage the community around this. And, and again, Citizens Advisory Committee is something that we would recommend and obviously we continue with next year based on, on that interest. So, questions that, that Erica had, had identified? And again, certainly, you know, we can, we can entertain any early thoughts or feedback tonight or, you know, look at them over the, the next month. We're a little bit early in looking at the community engagement plan because we want to be really intentional about it. What are we missing? Are there, are there kind of key, um, communication elements or segments of our community that we need to have a more focused effort around getting to? Certainly, community engagement is one area where I, I do rely heavily on your feedback collectively as a board representing our, our community. What, you know, what are we missing out of the plan? Are there any efforts that, you know, you don't see significant value and that we should abandon in terms of, of those communication plans? So, um, I'll stop talking and entertain any early thoughts you have.
What about our, our, our faith-based groups that are out there within the community? I, I, you know, we are a, a town that has probably more churches or capital than, than most communities. Are there, are there groups that we can get out, you know, be in touch with just to get the word out there about our schools more than anything? Just to educate the community as another tool, um, maybe that they would, you know, welcome a, a roadshow or, um, you know, versus maybe getting a newsletter email to them? But maybe sometimes it's just making that, making that connection.
First of all, um, I really am happy to see the, um, annual State of the District remain, you know, as part of an annual thing. And I'd like to keep it focused on district accomplishments. Here's where we are, you know, and then, obviously, here's where we need your help. Here's what we need to, to think about. I think that worked out really well last year. And, um, I think, I think if we keep that as an annual thing, I think that could only benefit us and benefit the community. They'll, they'll know what we're up to. They know the challenges we face. And, uh, and, and they'll give us their feedback. In terms of adding something to the plan, I know there are a lot of communications in here, you know, something from the board, newsletter from the board. I would like to somehow make sure that when the community gets information, they understand that the board is involved in it. Because I'm not sure we're still, we're still having that disconnect. When we had our community engagement sessions, um, there were people who were saying, well, we didn't hear enough from the board about, you know, Jefferson. We didn't really hear from the board. And there just wasn't that connection between what was coming out from the superintendent and from the communications and the board. So I would, I would like to see more personal communication from the board through the board president. And, uh, I, I just think that that can do nothing but help us as well so that they understand that the, the team includes the board and they understand the board's role in, in placing the district where we are. So I think that would be the one thing that I would say add to the plan. But I, I think this year was a very good year for communicating, you know, with the community. I, I would like to be able to drag them out the street, you know? But I think anything we can do to reach out more and, uh, and, and be present in the community, if we can, as board members, can take some of that load, you know, with a script or whatever, I mean, I think especially the officers, I think that would be good for us to, to say, you know, we support what's going on. We voted for it. Uh, we, we, uh, we understand, you know, we've looked at what you wanted and we, and we've done it. So I, I just would like to kind of make that connection stronger.
I think too, if anything that we can do to reach that 75%, whether it be more getting involved to more of the senior groups and even, I think even, you know, I, I think I've mentioned this before. You know, we could Skype a Jefferson, you know, show or an elementary, you know, musical to these senior groups as, as a way of entertainment, you know, as they meet. I know my in-laws do a lunch bunch in, in Warrenville. I don't think, they would probably love that opportunity to see a musical and, you know, be able to get that, that, make that more of a connection with that subsegment of our population and our schools.
And, um, wherever people live, they're very, their little niche community is, everybody knows everybody and, and, um, there, I wish there were more associations, like where I live, I live in a subdivision and we have email each other and because we have bylaws, so it's a little more reason that you have to be connected. But if we somehow try to reach to them or even, can we collaborate with the, uh, Park District? I'm sure they want their information to get out and we want ours or tag on to some meeting where a lot of people show up, but, you know, need to brainstorm probably to help Erica, but, but Erica and you, Dr. Schuler, have done an outstanding job, I think really made steps this past year or two to be very conscientious about it. And, you know, I'm very pleased. But yeah, there's more ways to have it, more of buzz talk or, or a place to go or get them to go to our website. I'm not sure if you can find that person who's missed know-it-all in every suburb, in every area. I'll have to think about that.
All right. You want ideas? I've got three ideas. Actually, the third one, I wasn't even gonna mention, but you kind of brought it up and I'm not sure it's a good idea, but, um, you know, I've been struggling a little bit with the chance to chats we have, which are great when we go meet for the two high schools. We hear from the kids, the students at the high schools. But from the community standpoint, I mean, we have three of them. We're lucky to get a dozen people between these three, three meetings. So, you know, again, I don't know if this is a good idea, but, you know, is there some kind of, do you have a mini chance to chat with the board? Where maybe the first Friday of every month, if, if a group of people, if you can get 10 people to come and you can meet with two board members for now? Something like that? Where we individually schedule, depending on our, our other work commitments, that if somebody gathers up 10 people and contacts the school district and we've got, we want to go talk about an issue and it's 10:00 AM on Friday morning, the first Friday of every month, and we figure out which two board members can be planning to listen. It's a different way to, to create that two-way communication in a, in a way that we're offering the opportunity and if you can get enough people here and you want to have that, we'll do it. I know it's a bigger time commitment, but maybe that's a way to, to fill something else out of this two-way side. Another two-way communication I think that's worth exploring, and I know I've shared with Dr. Schuler and I think Erica's looked at it, but there's some online tools and services that I've been exposed to in my business that, um, you know, people, you can, you can sign up. People, anybody in the community can register with a very simple information, name, what's, uh, email address. And it's a way for us to kind of pose out to people who register a question or a series of issues that we want feedback on. I think it could be done fairly cost-effectively. It's a different way. People still have to sign up. That's the big problem. It's, you know, we can push out all the information we want, but we can't make people want to be engaged. So that's another idea. And then, and then the first one, I'm going backwards in my list. And I, I think I brought this up previously, but it's how do we, how do we try to reach out to the, all those citizens voters who don't have kids in the school? So, we have this e-blast that we push out every week and it's so easy to sign up and put your name and put your email address. It takes like, you know, 30 seconds. Is there some way we can do a little mini campaign directly to people's mailbox that if they want to sign up and get information, all I gotta do is go to this link, put your name in, it will give you information? That's, that's an effort to try to get people information. Like I said, we can do that all we want to, but if people don't want to be engaged, we're not gonna do anything. But I think it's, it would be a worthwhile effort to, to try to do that in some fashion. So those are my three ideas.
Jim, do you have any comments? I have a couple of comments. I raised this last year as kind of a takeoff on what Brad mentioned. I don't know why we have to confine our chat with the board to two high schools and an SSC. I thought maybe we could go to the community center at one time or Wheaton Warrenville Public Library, Wheaton Public Library. It's an effort to reach out to the community. And maybe just because somebody happens to walk in to Wheaton Public Library from the 75%, they'll sit down and chat with us. Or the Warrenville Public Library.
Well, they can publicize it on their door.
Right.
And then, you know, as people walk in the library every day or whatever, they'll maybe come back on Saturday.
And Dr. Schuler, I, I think all of us appreciate the updates we get from you at our board meetings and periodically through emails about what's happening down in Springfield as far as what's the situation's pending. Senator Menares, uh, funding formula build, uh, 2020 Vision Funding Formula. I'd like to have, it was you and Eric considered, uh, including in the Friday focus, perhaps a paragraph or two on legislative developments that may be impacting us. I know that that information's available in the Daily Herald from time to time or Tribune or, or even on TV and radio. The more often we can get it out there to our residents, the more I think they'll be able to appreciate all the different challenges that we're facing, not only with, come within the district here, but from the mess down in Springfield as well. Yeah, I concur. I, this, in case I'm applying the communication's pending, we've had the last few or so, it's done a tremendous job. When we made our presentation on community engagement at the ILS, we, and folks that attended that, they were, I have to say, were impressed by the efforts we made here. And I want to say, let's keep it up.
So, so getting back to the chance to chat, you know, when we first started that, we had the monthly and that was too many. So then, we went down to like quarterly and now we're down to what, three, three a year? Two each, you know, and I, I would hate to abandon the high school ones. I think those are so valuable to listen to what our students have to say. But maybe, I like your suggestion of instead of having one here, let's say we have one at, you know, Windermere. Or we have one at the Wheaton Public Library and another one maybe at the Warrenville Public Library. So would you say five, four, six? What, what number would you say would be the number you would like to start with? I'm just curious to, you know, making that.
Perhaps we can combine with Brad's suggestion, but we have to keep in mind our, commit our obligation with some of the open meeting act as well. But, you know, we want to have a meeting for a presentation, but we could have six chats with the board. And necessarily wouldn't have to include all members of the board. I certainly would hope all members could attend. But, um, I have the benefit of being retired, so I can attend chats with the board. But, uh, this one, I don't have in mind.
I have the libraries anyway. How about that?
I'm gonna go Windermere.
Go Windermere. Good job.
There you go.
Joel, Joel.
I'm sorry. So close.
Any other comments or, or questions for Dr. Schuler on the communication thing? If not, reports, we've all received a monthly financial report and employee requests, reports from board members. Are there any committee reports? Other reports from board members? Just want to, Wheaton High School is my adopted school. And I heard that a week from tonight, they're having a senior science program at 7:00. So if you have the time and can afford to be there or can possibly be there, you might want to put that on your calendar.
I'd like to share. I had the opportunity today, I think it was Faith. You did the presentation at the committee of the whole in February and you had three teachers that came in and, um, Dr. Jen Wolfe put the charge out there. If anybody would like to come and visit, and Hubble happens to be my, one of my adopted schools. So I spent the morning there this morning. And I have to tell you, after a weekend of reading that we had to do, this kind of reaffirms why we're here, spending the time with the kids. And she asked me to have conversations with her students. Well, I sat down with every single student today in her, in her eighth grade Ailing Arts class and talked to them about their projects, talked to them about their fit experience. They were so excited to share. They were so excited to share, and they were able to, they were doing what's called an iShare project, where it was, it's a lot of research, the biggest research project they've done all year, and I think it's important for us as board members to kind of hear that, you know, we see the, on paper, what we're trying to do with FIT, but to be able to then go into a classroom and see, and I asked students questions such as, you know, what makes this project better than maybe another project? And every single one of them said, I get to choose my topic, I get to really delve into it. I mean, in the topic choices, one of them was graffiti and street art, and another one did it on how do you become a pro basketball player, interviewed Stacy King, they had to do interviews with people, they had to do a lot of research options. I asked questions about when is the majority of this work being done, the majority is being done in the classroom, I asked questions about do people have the technology that they need, I found out that the majority of eighth graders at Hubble do have their own phone to be able to use, however, they do check out a cart every day, and I really kind of got to, just the excitement on their face and their willingness to share of all the different things that they were doing, it was great to see, it was a wonderful way to spend my morning today, and I look forward to being able to go in and see some of the other things that are happening with that.
Any other reports from board members? If not, we proceed to topics for future discussion. We'll be discussing the master facility plan report, the 2016-2017 budget, we'll begin a review of Vision 2018 and goal setting, and we'll be receiving a progress report on social emotional learning and update. Our next regular meeting is June 8th at 7:30 PM here, and do we have public comments being on Genites? We do not. So we're about to move to closed session. Closed session items, our list of possible action, appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees in the district under 5 ILCS 120/2, sub-paragraph C, sub-paragraph 1. Collecting negotiating matters between the district and its employees or the representatives of deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees under 5 ILCS 120/2, sub-paragraph C, sub-paragraph 2. As for motion on the second to adjourn the closed session for the purpose of discussing appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the district under 5 ILCS 120/2, sub-paragraph C, sub-paragraph 1. Collecting negotiating matters between the district and its employees or the representatives of deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees under 5 ILCS 120/2, sub-paragraph C, sub-paragraph 2. No action is expected following the closed session. Do I have a motion on the second?
Why, does that have to repeat it? I so move.
Moved by Mrs. Inteher?
Second.
Second is by Mr. Paulson, his son, which he please call the board.
Mrs. Inteher?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mr. Gavgiani?
Yes.
Mrs. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mrs. Kankil?
Yes.
Mr. Robin?
Yes, the motion passes. Now move to closed session.